Good evening. Welcome to Cuyahoga County Executive Ed Fitzgerald's Town Hall Meeting. I'm Dale Miller, county council member for District Two. I would also like to introduce two of my colleagues. We have Councilman Dan Brady from the neighboring Third District. He is playing an extremely important role as the Chairperson of the Human Services Committee. And we also have with us Councilperson Purnell Jones from District Eight, which includes parts of the east side of Cleveland and Maple Heights and Garfield Heights. And he also is playing an extremely important role as part of, as the Chairperson of the Public Works Committee. And he probably is the Chairperson that reviews more legislation than any other councilperson. So, thank you both for being here. Our District Two includes Lakewood, Brook Park, and the Two West Park wards of Cleveland, eighteen and nineteen. Council President Marty Sweeney regrets that he could not be with us tonight due to previous commitments. However, he was instrumental in helping arrange the location for tonight's meeting. So, we thank him for that. I have the distinct honor of introducing our Cuyahoga County Executive Ed Fitzgerald. Mr. Fitzgerald served as Lakewood City Councilperson and Lakewood Mayor before being elected in 2010 as Cuyahoga County's first county executive. Executive Fitzgerald has provided strong leadership to right-sized county departments and save taxpayers money while not reducing services. He is implementing a personnel system based on merit and consistent application throughout the county system. He has worked with the county council to implement an improved contracting system with strong oversight from both the executive and the council. And he is expanding the use of competitive bidding wherever possible. Executive Fitzgerald is providing more information to the public on county operations than we have ever seen previously with more transparency improvements to come. Executive Fitzgerald will give a report on progress made so far, tell of plans for the future, and answer your questions. So, I now present to you County Executive Ed Fitzgerald.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening to everybody. Thank you for, for being here and, and participating with us. This is the, the most recent in a series of, of town hall meetings that we've had all across the, the county. And it continues a tradition that I had when I was the mayor of Lakewood. I used to do these on a, on a monthly basis. I know there's a couple of people that are here from Lakewood. So, you will find that I am as boring in Cleveland as I was in Lakewood. So, and you're going to find some of this familiar because a lot of what we're doing at the county are similar to some of the things, that some of the management practices that we try to introduce in the, in the city of, in the city of Cleveland. I also want to, there's a couple of people I, and, and first of all, I want to, I want to thank the local community development corporation based around the Piritus area for, for helping us identify this location and help us get this all set up. So, I, I appreciate that. You have my gratitude for, for you. And I also want to, I want to thank, I want to thank Father, Father Doug for opening the facility here to us at Blessed Trinity. When I heard it was going to be at Blessed Trinity, I said, "Where, where is that? I, I've never even heard of it before." Then I realized it was Ascension. So, I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, but, but it's the old Ascension, I should say. And I won't say anything about the bishop, but at any rate, the, Father Doug did assure me that this, this does not count for mass. So, so if any of you were thinking it does, it does not. And I also want to recognize, State Representative Mike Foley came in as I was being introduced. So, Mike, I just want to recognize. What I'm going to do today is, or this evening is, I'm going to, and I'm going to try to be brief, but I have a lot of ground to cover. I'm going to try to give you an overview of what the county is up against really and what we're facing and what are our, what are our assets that we have and what are the challenges that we have, just to kind of set the stage of where we're, what we're dealing with here. Then I want to tell you an overview of what the new county system is, how it's supposed to work, how it's supposed to be organized. And then I want to give you a, an overview of the strategies that we're using to try to, to try to move the ball forward. And I'll try to do that all relatively quickly. We try to have these run roughly an hour. I, they, sometimes they go, they go a little bit longer, but I want to take as many questions as, as I can when I'm done with, done with my remarks. We have some representatives, by the way, from some various county agencies that are here. So, we have Rick Werner, who's the Director of our Human Services Department, is here. We also have an individual here from the Sheriff's Department because sometimes people have public safety questions. And we also have some other staffers. So, if I can't answer the question and I can't find somebody to answer the question, we'll take your information and we'll try to get the answer for you as quickly as possible. Sometimes also, I, I can say sometimes there's a human services issue or a public safety issue or, or something that people don't necessarily want to share with the rest of the class, so to speak. And if there's something that you want to bring to our attention confidentially or there's a privacy issue, just let us know afterwards. You don't have to, you don't have to ask the question in front of all of us. So, let's go through, we're going to do a little PowerPoint presentation. Let's, let's get to it. By the way, before I go any further, I also want to recognize, one of the things that the county invests in is we're trying to invest in social service programs that we think can have an impact on the life of a young person. And one of the programs that we are a contributor to is called the MyCom program. Some of you are probably familiar with it. Some of you, I know you're, you're familiar with it because you're part of it. So, if you're one of the kids that are here through MyCom, if you just raise your hand so we can see you're here. So, I just want to thank you for being here. Because what we say is important, but we're, let's face it, we're old. Okay? I just turned forty-three and so the end is in sight for me. But you're, you're, you're going to be, you're going to be, you're going to be the future. So, everything that we say is important, but that has to do with the present. But the future, you'll have more to do with the future than, than probably most of us will. Okay? Now, let's just talk, as I said, I always start this, and I start out with, I start out with the negative, but then we'll get to the positive. And you've heard these all things, these things before because there's a lot of people in the greater Cleveland area that are happy to tell you what's wrong with greater Cleveland. And those, those people that feel that way, those people that believe that greater Cleveland's best days are, are gone in our, are part of the past and that we are on an inevitable downward trend, they tend to be very vocal. They like to let everybody know how it used to be perfect and now it's terrible. And, and so we've all heard that before. And so, you've heard some of these things, but let's, let's, let's go through them because there's, there's some, there's some reality. Now, first of all, population loss, that the county has, has only lost about a hundred thousand, and that may not sound like a lot. Now, we all know the city of Cleveland has lost a couple hundred thousand through the years and is down more than a couple hundred thousand if you compare it at its peak of almost, of around a million. The county, according to the latest census, or the city, is down to under four hundred thousand. Now, the county's only lost in the last ten years or so, has only lost about a hundred thousand. Now, that may not sound that bad, but you've got to keep in mind, the country as a whole is, is growing. So, we're losing or staying flat at best while the rest of the country is growing. And so, that is not, that is not a healthy sign. The unemployment rate, it's actually a little lower than this now. It's more around eight point four percent right now. But it's roughly, I always tell people, because we always hear about the unemployment rate, but let's talk about how many people that is. Well, the workforce in Cuyahoga County is about six hundred and fifty thousand people. That's the number. All right? And so, the unemployment rate, you figure if the unemployment rate was ten percent, it'd be sixty-five thousand people. So, just to give you some kind of sense of where, where we're at. Now, to put that in another context, and, and we think that it's around fifty thousand as far as the actual unemployment rate right now. That's the population of the entire city of Lakewood. So, if you can just imagine, if you can just picture that, we all know how crowded Lakewood is. It's a crowded, pretty big suburb, second biggest suburb in the county after Parma. It'd be as if the entire city was unemployed. So, it's a big group of people, but, but the actual number is actually worse than that because there are a lot of people that are unemployed that don't show up on the unemployment statistics. Why don't they show up? Because, first of all, not everybody knows this, you have to have a job to be, in the first place, to be counted as, as unemployed. So, if you get out of school and you don't get a job and you're out in the workforce, you will not count in the unemployment statistics. Not everybody knows that. You've got to be employed first to be unemployed. There's also another number, which is the underemployment rate. And the underemployment rate in the United States is generally around double whatever the unemployment rate is. So, we're around eighteen, seventeen, eighteen percent in this county in terms of being underemployed. What does that mean? That means you may have a job, but it's part-time, it doesn't have benefits, maybe you're trying to string together two or three jobs to try to make ends meet. That also has a huge economic effect. And I actually think the true number is even larger than, than either of those numbers because I think there are people who have just completely fallen out of the economy. They have fallen through the cracks. They are lost people. And it is very hard to calculate that number because they fly under the radar screen of a lot of things that we do, even the census. I don't even know that we pick them up in the census. So, that's a problem. That's a problem. High school graduation rate. This is relevant especially for some of you that are, that are still in school. It's seventy-one point four percent, but it's much worse than that in the city of Cleveland. And there's a huge gap between city of Cleveland kids and the rest of the county. There's a huge achievement gap there. And the numbers are also pretty lousy in terms of the number of high school juniors that are, and seniors that are passing their proficiency tests. These are disturbing numbers. Now, the numbers of adults that have college degrees in this county is about twenty-seven percent. Now, why does that number matter? Not everybody needs a college degree. Not, there are plenty of people who make a lot more money than anybody in this room that never went to college. I had an uncle that was wealthiest person in my family and he dropped out of high school and made a million dollars. It happens in America. But what we know is, those are the exceptions. We know that for every year of post-high school education, it has something like a ten thousand dollar effect on your income. We know it. So, we know that if we're only at twenty-seven percent college graduation rate for this county, that we're going to be hurting. Why? Because the jobs of the twenty-first century are more and more likely to require a college degree. It is estimated that in the state of Ohio, in the next twenty years, that approximately sixty-five percent of the jobs that will be available will require a college degree. That's incredible, that's an incredible number, but it's true. So, this number is of great concern to us. Foreclosed homes, we all know that in the national foreclosure crisis, we were at the, at the center of the, of the storm. And it has kind of leveled off a little bit, but it's still at an alarming, an alarming rate. The corruption scandal that we, we went through in county government in the last couple of years, which you may have heard of, it got, I think there was an article or two about it in the paper every day. You know, that just added insult to injury. When you have all these problems, that's when you need to be government, that's when you need government to be at the top of its game. Right? That's when you need your, your elected officials to really be focused on changing things. And if they're focused instead on their personal bank account or how they can profit from the situation or how they're going to stay out of jail, then government is not going to act or operate in, in peak efficiency, which is what we need. So, the corruption scandal that we had was, we just didn't need that on top of all the other problems that we had. It's also a disincentive for people to want to live here. It's a disincentive for businesses to want to locate here, all around bad news. Now, speaking of bad news, then this will be the end of the depressing part before people, before people leave. I don't, I don't make any bones, bones about this, okay? This is not a partisan comment. It's not a political comment. I'm just telling you as a fact, and I think is an indisputable fact, this is the worst state government for local governments that we've ever had, ever. There's never been a state government that cut local funding like the one that we have now. Never. Nothing's even close. I, I just want to, I just want to bring one point up to you about that, okay? Because this wasn't said enough because this is really what the state budget crisis, the way they dealt with the state, the state budget crisis. Lots of government entities had budget crises. My city of Lakewood had one. The county has budgetary problems. The city of Cleveland has had budgetary problems. The state of Ohio had budgetary problems. But what they did was, they did what I call a, a reverse bailout. We bailed Columbus out. We didn't get to go to Columbus and say, "Guess what? City of Cleveland needs more money. Cuyahoga County needs more money. Lakewood needs more money." They took money that was local money that had always, that came from the, from the, from the municipalities, went to Columbus, and we were supposed to be entitled to a share of it back. And it made the first part of the trip, but it never made it back. And that is in large part how they ended up balancing their budget. And then they said, "This is the most fiscally conservative budget that the state has ever passed." Well, I just want you to imagine something. What if the county had said, "Well, we're having budget problems. And so, as a result of our budget problems, we're going to cut services to Cleveland, Lakewood, Fairview, Brook Park, and that's how we're going to solve it." Now, all of you cities, you figure out how you're going to deal with it. Now, we're going to take, we're just going to keep more of your local tax money. And then you figure out how you're going to cut it. So, they have passed all of these problems on to the local community. Now, we're going, we are cut at least twenty million dollars and we're still trying to calculate the, the total cost. And that's not even, that wasn't even the end of it because then they added insult to injury because they cut taxes, but they didn't cut state income taxes. They cut the estate tax, which they weren't really collecting much of anyway. Though, the estate tax was going to the, to the local municipalities to make ends meet. So, they cut our own money, our own funding that we had, that we were entitled to. Then they cut taxes, but they cut our taxes that we were going to collect so then they could get the credit to say, "Well, we cut taxes," but they didn't cut the taxes that were funding their own budget. So, it, and the end is probably not in sight because we don't even know if their budget projections were correct. They may come back and cut more. So, that has been a very, very, very difficult situation for us to deal with and we're doing our best. But I have all the sympathy in the world for, for people like Mike Foley that have been arguing against this kind of thing in Columbus. I'm sure it's very stressful. He had no gray hair when he went down there. And look at him, look at him. Look at him now. He's only like twenty-one years old. Now, look, let's talk about the good things. And we have a lot more good things to talk about. And these aren't by any means a total, a total, an exhaustive list because we could go on all night, but there are a lot of good things that are happening in greater Cleveland. And there's a lot, a lot of things that we've had that we've kept and we've got a lot of good things that are coming up. We have some of the best medical institutions in the world, in the world. We have, we have worldwide brands in terms of our, our medical institutions. We take it for granted sometimes because we've always had them. But between Metro and the, and University Hospital and Cleveland Clinic, they're known all over the world. And they're a huge source of our, of our, of our local economy because it's been, still been growing. We have a vibrant private sector. We've lost some of the big Fortune five-hundred companies, but we have a lot of small and growing businesses. I was, earlier today, we had a groundbreaking over at the old White Motors production plant. We all, we all remember that, right? You know how many years that building has been closed? Thirty years, thirty years. And it was, it was an industrial powerhouse at one time. The city, the county, the state, some nonprofits, some developers that had the vision for it. It's, it's, the, the entire place has been redone now. The old buildings that were shuttered and were, were a, were an eyesore and were dragging the neighborhood down have been knocked down. The land has been cleaned. The land was contaminated. Now, the land has been cleaned. There are high-tech businesses that are moving in there. Now, it's not like it used to be where you had one company like White Motors that was going to employ, employ more than a thousand people because that's not really necessarily the way our economic growth is going to work. But we have some small, cutting-edge businesses there. And it's starting small. There may only be about a hundred people working there now, but they're looking at expanding, consolidating some business from out of state. They already had a business move from out of state into that location. So, we've got, we've got a lot of vibrant things that are happening. And we, we do a groundbreaking like that, fifty jobs here, a hundred jobs here, a hundred and twenty jobs here. We're doing those things on a, on a weekly, on a weekly basis. Outstanding higher education institutions, public and private. Tri-C is one of the best community colleges in the country. Cleveland State is fantastic and it's getting better. Case Western, Baldwin Wallace, Notre Dame College, the list goes on and on. We're in a great location with being on the lake and, and Lake Erie, which is a freshwater lake, and that's increasingly an important natural asset. We have great nonprofits. I mentioned your local community development corporation, but we also, we have, we just have a great talent base in this county, which just other places don't have. And the cultural institutions, let me put it this way. If you took the top thirty cities in the United States and you listed all their cultural institu-, all their cultural entities and you just took the brand names off of it and you ranked it, Cleveland would, would rank near the top. There is no city our size, no metropolitan area our size, none in the United States that has the kind of cultural institutions we have. Between the orchestra and the Cleveland Museum of Art and the Playhouse Square, Playhouse Square is the second largest theater district in the United States. Not everybody knows that. I, I went over the other day to the Cleveland Museum of Art, which I've always loved the Cleveland Museum of Art. I always loved the building from the outside to the inside. And even when I was, when I was, when my wife and I were dating twenty years ago, twenty-one years ago now, this, this fall, she used to live over by the Cleveland Museum of Art. And we used to go there on a date every once in a while, which she thought was romantic and I thought was free. So, it was a very good combination. I was in there the other day and do you know, they're creating the, and you can't, you can't appreciate it from the outside because it just looks like there's some, some renovating going on. You know, they're creating the largest interior gathering space in greater Cleveland. It's incredible. It's a hundred and fifty million dollar project, all private money. And there's just a lot of great things that other, other cities, they just don't have it. They just don't have it. And then, you know, all of you, right? We have a diversity of people and talent and too often in this community, we've been divided either by ethnicity or by race or by geography. And you kind of have this silly thing in Cleveland where the east side doesn't talk to the west side and so on and so forth. And I, I've never understood it and, and, but it's actually a strength. We need to recognize, we need to recognize that, that it's, it's a strength. Okay? Now, I'm going to go through this quickly because I've already gone on a little bit, a little bit long. So, I'm going to skip over some of these details, but I'm going to quickly give you just an overview of, of what we have going on in this county. First of all, our, our budget is about one point, almost one point three billion dollars. Most of that taxes comes from, most of the, most of that revenue comes from either sales taxes or, or property taxes. And then there's, there's different federal programs that we end up being a, a pass-through and then we also charge for some services. But that's, that's mostly where the, the revenue comes from. Expenses, this is just a quick summary of what we spend it on. The biggest categories are social services, which are about forty percent of our budget. That's everything from any of your, your social welfare programs to the Department of Children and Family Services and all of the very, the many nonprofits that we end up funding. By the way, for those of you in the city of, of Cleveland, the vast majority of the funds that we spend on social services are spent in the city of Cleveland. And the va-, actually about seventy-five percent of the community-based programs through community development corporations that we fund are in the city, are in the city of Cleveland. And then public safety is another big part of what we do. And that's mostly unfortunately, running our jail and our prisoner services and the whole criminal operation through the courts, which unfortunately is, is too big a part of our budget. I'm not going to go through all this. You know most of this, but this is a part of a, a long list of everything we do. Everything from assessing property and collecting taxes, our sanitary engineer, building roads, our kennel and dog licenses services, estate tax settlements, homestead exemption, the medical examiner's office, the list, the list goes on and on and on. Here's a quick summary of what was the old system, what's the new system. The old system, you had three county commissioners, the auditor, recorder, treasurer, prosecutor, sheriff, coroner, and clerk of courts, and they were all elected individually and they were all independent. Some of them got their budgets through, through, they, they had their budgets approved by the county commissioners, but they had independent authority to hire, fire, discipline, and manage their programs. What is the new system? The new system is the county executive, myself, the county council, and there are eleven of them. And as we said, we have, we have three of them here today, Mr. Brady, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Jones. But there are eleven districts countywide. And then we have the prosecutor, who is also still being, being elected independently. Now, what do those three branches do? Well, the county council has an oversight function. They set some policies and they, and they, they set our budget. And they have other miscellaneous, they have miscellaneous appointments that they make. And they also act, maybe most importantly, as a voice of the people on any issue that ends up coming in front of us. And they're a liaison between the people and their government. So, they, they have an important role to play there as well. As a county executive, all of the commissioners' functions, all of the auditor, recorder, treasurer, sheriff, coroner, and clerk of courts, they all report to me. So, some of those positions, well, the commissioners don't, they're, they're gone now. But the, the rest of them are here in some form or fashion and they report, they report to me. So, we have an appointed treasurer. We have an appointed fiscal officer that handles what the treasury, or I'm sorry, what the, what the auditor and the recorder used to do. We have a, a medical examiner instead of a coroner, but, and they all are part of my cabinet, basically. Now, a lot of them had to be approved by the county council and the budget has to be approved by the county council, but they report to me administratively. So, the idea was that we would streamline government and make it more accountable to the people and, and more logical in terms of getting these, these functions done as opposed to having them all chopped up into different, under different elected officials. Now, here are the three major priority, there's a lot of things we're working on, a lot of things. And you, you feel free to ask about anything. If I, if I know the answer, I'll tell you. But these are the three big, big categories that we're working on. The first thing is, is restoring trust because if people don't trust you, you can't really help them. So, if we're going to have programs that are going to make a difference, you have to establish the basic trust that people should have in their government. Doesn't mean that people should be naive about their government or not be skeptical about their government, but we have to demonstrate that we're worthy of, of the public trust. And we've lost that in the last few years because of some, some disgraceful behavior by some elected officials who should have known better. So, we've got, we've got some work to do to show that we're, that you can trust us. Efficiency because county government was, it had its pluses and its minuses and it had its, its, its functions that it did very, very well, but it also had a lot of inefficiencies. And we have found a lot. And we have saved millions and millions of dollars just in the first eight months of this year, and I'll give you some examples of that. And we've got more to go. We could be more efficient and we're going to be. Why do we want to be efficient? Well, efficiency is good for its own, for its own sake. It's a, it's a virtue. Efficiency is good because it's your money, it's your checkbook, and you expect us to watch that money and be efficient with it. And it's also important because we want to use some of that money to invest in programs that we think are going to improve the greater Cleveland area. And that's the third category, is things that we want to invest in. Things the county government didn't do before or didn't do very much of that we think it can do a better job or do more of. What are we doing to restore trust? First of all, working with the county council. We have the strictest ethical code in Ohio for any county, bar none. We have mandatory ethics training for all employees. We just finished a whole round of it and we all had to go through it. I had to go through it. Everybody had to go through it. And we did about five thousand employees that we ended up training on ethical rules. Employee evaluations, that may sound basic, but we had employees that had worked there for thirty years and there were only two things in their personnel file, the day they were hired and the day they retired. You've got to evaluate employees. You've got to try to reward people that are doing a great job. And if they're disre- got to try to reward people that are doing a great job and if they're disrespecting their public position, they've gotta go. But you can't do that if you don't try to evaluate them. Some departments in the county did that, some didn't. They all do now. They all do now. Ethics training for all vendors. What I mean by vendor, if you do business with the county, you've got to go through the same kind of, it's different, but you've got to go through ethics training too. You've got to sign a pledge that you're going to abide by ethical standards. If a county employee asks you to do something wrong, you've got a duty to report it. And if you don't, then you're not gonna be a vendor with Cuyahoga County anymore. So we've got to make them accountable too because, you know, there was a lot of attention paid to the public officials that did wrong, but there are also some business people that were right at the center of this whole thing. And they were making out like bandits on it. And we don't want, we don't want those people to have the right to do business with our county anymore. So we're, we, we've had man-, we're, we're about halfway down with our vendors. We have hundreds of vendors. Independent enforcement. You can have any rule you want, but you gotta enforce it. I don't know how many of you have children, but if you have a child, you can tell them what the rules are, but they're gonna see if you're serious about it, right? Is he really gonna enforce that? When I say that I've gotta, you know, I have to put the cap back on toothpaste, does he really care? Yeah, I do. And we've got to show that we're, we're serious about it. So we hired an independent inspector general. We actually hired a federal prosecutor. And we established her, her office as an independent office that has broad authority to enforce these rules. Not, not the elected official of enforcing the rule, although we're, we're doing it too, but we wanted somebody completely independent. She can investigate anybody in county government, myself included. And that's important. And, and it sent, it has sent a very strong message to, to everybody, I think. And by the way, her office, her office physically is located on the third floor in, in Frank Russo's old office, which was important, it was an important message to send. Because it literally, it literally went from a crime scene, because that's what it was, there were crimes literally being committed in that office, to going, to having a, a federal prosecutor in there that is gonna be enforcing the rules and already has. The other, the other part about enforcement is, we have disciplined more people for rules violations in the last eight months than we had probably in the previous twenty years. And it isn't that all of a sudden people started misbehaving. It's that there were just a lot of, there's a lot of lax enforcement. And that wasn't because of the inspector general. And, and that's everything from actual misconduct to people just not showing up for work. Or not being professional to customers. We just terminated somebody a few weeks ago who was dealing with client, or customers in the, in the county administration building and was yelling at citizens that were coming in there for services. And she'd done it before, but in the past, this person was supposedly untouchable because she knew the right person or was related to the right person. And I said, get, this person's gone. And so we're sending a very strong message about that. We also want to try to reward people for good work. It's not just about punishing bad workers. We want to have a system where the people that are going the extra mile and really trying to be customer-friendly, we want to, we want to promote them as much as we possibly can. And we're trying to build that into the, into the system too. Transparency, all I mean by that is that we're trying to be an open book. What you see is what you get. Here's what we're working on in this, this town hall meeting, I hope is, is, is part of that. Efficiency. What are we doing to drive efficiency? I'm gonna try to go through this stuff quickly. County stat is a process that we do where we measure every single function that we do. So whatever the county function is, we try to assign a, a value to that and try to track it. Are we doing better or worse than we were last month? Information technology, the county was a mess. It had, first of all, some of the people that were running it were incompetent and corrupt. I mean, that's a, that's quite a combination. Some people are just corrupt but not incompetent. Some people are incompetent and they're not corrupt. They had both. So we're consolidating it and we're saving, we've already saved over a million dollars in IT and we're just getting, getting started with it. We recruited a guy who had roots in northeast Ohio but had run a system down in Florida and they're really, I think, gonna rev-, revolutionize it. And it's, it's gonna make us a much more efficient operation. Fewer employees. We are five percent smaller, about two hundred, we're about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty fewer employees now than we were in January and service has not been affected. Some ways, service is better. And we're not done yet. How much smaller is it gonna get? I don't know. It will get as small as we can get it. We don't, some people in county government ran their offices almost as a hiring hall. How many people they were, would they hire? As many as they were allowed to. If the commissioners gave them a million dollars, they'd spend a million dollars. They gave them ten million, they'll spend ten million. The way to create jobs is to create an economy that creates jobs, not putting people on the public payroll. Now, there is a need for a public payroll, but it's gotta be lean and efficient and effective and competent. So we're smaller and we're probably gonna get a lot smaller before we're, before we're done. We've saved about fifteen million dollars just in personnel. Fifteen million just in personnel this year. Building consolidation. County owns or operates over fifty buildings across the county. There's no rhyme or reason to it. And we don't need that many buildings and I think we're gonna consolidate them. Some of them are little buildings you've never heard of, that I didn't even know the county owned or rented. And some of them are big buildings like the Ameritrust, which is for sale, by the way. If anybody wants to make an offer, please let me know before, before you leave. We're gonna get that, we're gonna get that whole thing sorted out and we're gonna save, eventually we're gonna save a lot of money. Because when you own a building, you gotta pay for upkeep, fuel, maintenance. We, we have way too many buildings and we're gonna consolidate it in a way that I think is gonna provide better customer service too. Because the other thing is, we don't want, we don't want customers to have to go from building to building to building or floor to floor to floor. We want to try to make it as convenient as possible. Regionalism. We, we're looking at ways to share services between, between cities. Okay, what are the things that we want to invest in and then I want to take any questions that you might have? First of all, every, basically every nonprofit, every university, every healthcare professional, every educational professional that has studied social service programs says, say the same thing. And that is, if you have a limited amount of money to spend in social services, the area that gets the biggest return on the investment is early childhood education. If you can make an impact on a child's life between zero and five years of age, that's when you want it, that's when you can make a difference and that's where you should really put a focus on. We have kids that start kindergarten in Cuyahoga County that will start kindergarten with a, with a five-hundred-word vocabulary. We have kids that will start kindergarten with a four-thousand-word vocabulary. And that difference makes all the difference. Because what, what it means is, if they start out in the hole, when they start grade school, you will spend, the rest of the, the, society's effort is gonna be trying to change the trajectory that they're on at that point in their lives. So all the remedial education, and it'll go on and on and on and it'll be expensive and you'll spend everything, you know, and we know that that's expensive and we know that it, its success rate is not that great. But if you can get them out on a strong start, it, there's a better chance that they can stay that way. Now, the MyCom program actually talks about trying to keep some of those, those gains that you might make in early childhood and try to keep them going through the rest of the, through the rest of the education process. But what we're doing is, we're trying to put additional resources into the, the county's Invest in Children program. And we have made a, a commitment that if the private sector, the non-, nonprofits will invest some more money into that program, we'll, we will match it. So we've been working with county council about trying to reserve more money and there will be more money spent next year in early childhood education at the county level than there has been actually in many years. And we're matching contributions that have been made by places like the Gun Foundation and PNC Bank and some other, some other charitable foundations. And we're gonna, we're gonna match those, those funds. College access. The, we're still working on this. This is a work in progress with the county council. But the county charter that sets up this whole system mandates us to have some type of college access or post-secondary programming for the children of this community. Like I said at the beginning, we know that if a child graduates high school without any additional education, without a life plan, without a skill, they're not gonna make it. I mean, it's a miracle if they make it. So we've got to do better. And we're actually working very closely with the city of Cleveland and we're gonna, I think Mayor Jackson and I are gonna make some announcements on that sometime soon. But the city of Cleveland realizes we've got work to do. We've also set up a task force where we've been meeting with the university presidents at Case and Tri-C and Cleveland State and all of these great institutions that I mentioned to say, how do we provide more options for our, for our kids? So we're, we're working on that and we're gonna put money into it. Law enforcement. We have about a million-dollar law enforcement initiative. It's gonna hire between eight and twelve community police officers that are sheriff's deputies. And they are going to be assigned on a rotating basis all over Cuyahoga County. And they're gonna work with local law enforcement to be visible, community-oriented police officers. They are not a replacement for local police, but they're gonna be some help. So that if a police force or a police district, let's say in the city of Cleveland, or the police chief in the city of Lakewood says, I need some help on a certain project, can you loan me the community policing task force? We can loan them those officers for, for two or three weeks. Now, some people might say, well, that doesn't make a very big difference. Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Let me, let me give you an example of why that makes a big difference. City of Lakewood at any one time only has about ten officers out on the road. And, and we have one of the biggest police officer, police forces per capita in the county. And I know that because I increased the number of police officers when I was the mayor there. So I know exactly how many we have. About a hundred, but when you, when you add up all of the different shifts and so forth and what's actually out on the road, a lot of times you have less than ten cars on the road. So if the sheriff's department comes out and puts twelve cars on the road, guess what? The police presence in Lakewood just doubled. And that makes a big difference for that period of time. Now, what, what do they do for that two or three weeks? That's, that's up to the community. They can do different things. But one of the things they can do is they can pick up everybody with a warrant that's out in that, in that particular area. That makes a big difference. I don't want to make anyone nervous here in case you have warrants out for you, but that makes a big difference. I saw one guy getting up ready to leave. We're not gonna, we're not gonna do it now. You know, we have almost, we have about sixteen thousand outstanding warrants in Cuyahoga County. Sixteen thousand. Now, now we have a certain process to try to pick those people up, but most of them get picked up because of a, of a traffic violation. And what we started doing in Lakewood was, we started working with the US Marshals Office where we would do what's called a warrant sweep. And we'd pick people up for all kinds of serious crimes. And that's just a, it's just a best practice that we should start doing and, and, and the sheriff's office is gonna start becoming a part of it. Economic development. We're doing a lot with economic development and this doesn't even do it justice, but we're gonna establish a, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna be making some announcements on this in, in, in a few weeks. But we're establishing a one-hundred-million-dollar economic development fund, which is the first of its kind in this county's history and in this state's history. It's mostly going to be a fund which is targeted to small and medium-sized businesses that are ready to expand. Now, why is that so important? Because the county has made major investments in projects, but it's usually been one big project at a time. And they're, they put hundreds of millions of dollars into those projects, but it's kind of like the, all your eggs in one basket. It was one big basket. And then you hope that that project has a transformative effect. So Jacobs Field or progressive, the Gateway Project, all right? Hundreds of millions of dollars, one big project. Brown Stadium, hundreds of millions of dollars, one big project. Medical Mart, four-hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars, one big project. Now, I'm not saying those projects are bad, but what I'm saying is, most experts will tell you that most jobs in the twenty-first century are not gonna be based around a sports facility or a, or a convention center for that matter. Most of the job growth that we get in this county is gonna be a business that employs twenty people that ends up employing thirty people. And sometimes I think people in government think that's not a big enough win. You want to get a company that comes in and hires a thousand people. Well, that's great when you can do that. But it's day in, day out, week at a time, getting small companies to become the Microsofts of tomorrow. I mean, these Fortune 500 companies that we had in Cleveland didn't move here from somewhere else. They started here as small businesses. So this is the biggest investment in, in that kind of emerging part of our economy that this county has ever seen or this state has ever seen. Because no other county, and that's why I want to, I want to leave this thought with you and then I want to take your question. No other county is doing this. No other county is doing this in Ohio. No other county is making these kinds of investments, especially when revenue is so tight. So we're doing some, we're taking some risks, but we're being more efficient and we're investing in things that I think are gonna make this a greater, a greater economy and a, a better place to raise a family. And we are making, we're making news in a positive way for a change all over the state. We have people talking to us from all over the place saying, how are you doing your hundred-million-dollar fund? How did you do that? You're, what's this law enforcement initiative that you're doing? How are you gonna have the, the state's first aggressive college scholarship fund? How are you gonna do that? So we're, we're really, I think, I think we're, we're set, we're, we're plowing some new ground here and we're, we're hopefully restoring not just your trust, but we're establishing this area as a, as a leader, I hope, across, across, across the country. That is my summary of what we've been working on. We have a, oh, council, oh, Councilwoman Conwell is here. I want to recognize County Councilwoman Yvonne Conwell is here. Hi, Yvonne. Okay, so let's take some questions. If there's anything on your mind, I'll do my best. We have a microphone right there in the center. So if you, if you, if you wouldn't mind using that, because this is being recorded by the paparazzi. So if you would, if you wouldn't mind doing that.
I'll start it off.
Yes.
First off, congratulations on your call. He's got some love. He was about to disenfranchise large groups of voters and I'm glad to see you. I'm sure he backed up based on the actions that you would conduct, period.
Well.
Just like the governor suddenly decided he wanted to do a, a moratorium on Senate Bill Five because of the huge recall vote on, on the, on the issue of the first play. Suddenly he was willing to negotiate, but he wasn't willing to negotiate before. And he surprised the proponents of opposing Senate Bill Five. At this point, they're saying, we're not negotiating. You could negotiate with us. How could we negotiate with you?
Right. Well, to your first, to your first point about this whole absentee ballot issue, do you mind if I just talk about that for, for, for a moment?
Absolutely.
Because there's some facts about that that have not gotten, have not gotten out. And I want to reiterate, reiterate some of those. The Secretary of State's office has talked about how Cuyahoga County is trying to do something different than all other, the other eighty-seven counties in Cuyahoga County. That isn't what's happening here. It isn't what's happening. In two thousand and four, we had a, we had a, a complete debacle in terms of our statewide election when it was the, it was the Kerry-Bush election. And Ohio made national news because of our disorganized elections. And, and I'm sure everybody here remembers it. And it, it, you had people waiting in the rain to vote, long lines, machines breaking down, waiting for hours. Some of them just gave up and went home. We'll never know how many people just didn't vote. It was a complete disaster.
There was a documentary with Fannie Lewis on that same subject.
Exactly. It was documented all over the country. We were a poster child for how not to run an election. This, this pilot project, which is what originally was, they said, how do we fix that? Because most of the problems were happening in the big city, Columbus, Cincinnati and Cleveland. And state law was changed. They changed state law to allow people to vote by mail. You used to only be allowed to vote by mail if you were, if you had a medical condition or you were over a certain age. And you would have to fill out an application, check a box and say you met one of these, these, these categories. And it used to be about eight percent of votes were cast by mail. About eight, nine percent. When they changed this rule, they said, okay, everybody can do it. You don't need a medical excuse. You don't need to be over sixty or over sixty-five, whatever it was. If you want to vote by mail, you can do it. If you wanna vote by mail, you can do it." They had really no instances of voter fraud as a result. There's all this talk about how it supposedly creates voter fraud. There's more confirmed sightings of Bigfoot than there have been of voter fraud by absentee ballot. It just, it just isn't happening. So, they started, they started having this new program. Now, we're up to almost 50% of the votes being cast in Cuyahoga County were being cast by mail, in Democratic areas and Republican areas. One of the most popular areas for absentee voting in this county was in Strongville. They ain't Democrats down there. I got news for you, if you thought they were, there's a few down there, but there's a lot of Republicans down there. They didn't vote for me, I know that. So, it wasn't being done to the advantage of one party or another party. It was just convenient and it was working and it was bipartisan. Because even local Republicans that were on our Board of Elections at the time were originally skeptical of it and they saw that it worked. And they changed their mind about it. They said, "This works. We wanna do this." So, now we're coming up to 2011 and all of a sudden it's become an issue. All of a sudden, it's a partisan issue. All of a sudden, it's gotta be stopped, no matter what. So, they issued, the Secretary of State, Huestead, issued this directive that prevented all five, there were five counties that were doing it in Ohio, that were doing this vote by mail, applications for everybody. But it isn't just five counties. It was one-third of the population of Ohio, one-third of the population of Ohio was having absentee ballot applications mailed to them. And he took away the options of the Board of Elections to mail to that one-third. I'll tell you what I'm proud of with Cuyahoga County is, all of those counties, when the Secretary of State came up with his ruling, all of those counties faced a choice. They had to decide whether they were going to allow him to get away with it or whether they were gonna stand up to him and try to preserve this important, I think, fundamental right. And we're the only county that stood up to him in Ohio and so far, we're winning. That's the good news. The bad news is, they're not done trying to stop us. We have gotten other indications that they may be filing suit against us. We've gotten indications from the State Auditor's Office that he's gonna try to stop us from doing it, but you know what? This is a fight worth fighting for. Really. Well, thank you for the time. I can tell you, and I also wanna, I also wanna give credit to our County Council because, again, there's pressure being put on county government. And they stood up to the pressure. They voted 10 to nothing to approve it, including Democrats and Republicans. And that, again, put the lie to this whole idea that it's a Democratic issue, it's a Republican issue. It's not. It's just a, it's just a civil rights issue. Any other, any other questions or comments?
We have a quick comment on college access, that one focus point you asked.
Yes, sir.
You might look into that citizenry who's in a position to do so, make contributions to a program that could be named something like Cuyahoga Theaters and supplying scholarships to county students.
It's not a bad idea. What we're doing right now is, and we're gonna be working on this with the County Council because the Charter states that they're supposed to come up with basically the framework for this. And so, we're working with them on this. We have a young man named Justin Bibb who works on my staff, who works on education issues. And he's looking at programs that are running in different counties, in different cities all across the United States. And he's trying to look for what works. I didn't mention that, but in our whole management process, we're trying to look at what's worked, what hasn't worked all across the United States. And he's starting to gather that information. But here's the, here's the thing that I think is important also to realize is that this is the first time in the history, the 200-year history of Cuyahoga County, that we have been trying to do something on education issues. County always just said, "That's..." Somebody else's problem. We're trying to do something about it. The guy that works for me on education is the first staffer that's ever worked on higher education issues in the history of Cuyahoga County. So, we got some work to do on it, but we realize that you can't have an economic future without an academic future. Those two things are related to each other and I think we get it. But thanks, thanks for the question. I appreciate it. Good to see you. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Somebody's taller than me.
There you go.
Okay, my question too was a little more specific.
Okay.
When a person buys a home in Cuyahoga County, you know how the values of a mountain actually, but say the value was still up, and say it's a foreclosure, so you're getting at a really good deal. However, the taxes on that home are very high because they are on the aforementioned evaluation.
Right.
Okay. I talked to somebody down in the Department of the Auditor's Office and at the Board of Revision. They say according to Ohio Revice Code, and I don't know if this is true because I haven't read it all, that you must file between January 1 and March 31st, something in that fact, about a two, three month period there. Here's the problem though. A person buys a home, who buys a home, say, in September? And from September until January, you're paying taxes on, say the home was originally a $400,000, $100,000 home. Say you got it for $425,000. All that money's coming to the counter, okay, on that former evaluation. I myself don't want to pay higher taxes on a home, other than the sale price of what that home is worth. That sale price is the market value of that home. Why don't they initiate a separate division in the Revision Board there that handles new sales so that people don't have to wait a year, a year and a half? Because here's something many people might not know. If you get the revision and your house unsound your sale price, which it should and will, you only get one year to go back and get reversed. If you were paying more than one year, it others take six months, eight months, four months, it's gone. I don't think that's very fair. Who gets paid tax unnecessarily with no representation? That's my only question. Is there a possibility that you could start something now here for new sales, separate than what established homes are, or is he complaining and I don't know, I couldn't understand?
Well, look, your question is, it's a fair question. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know if we would be allowed to do that because a lot of what we do with our evaluations is prescribed by state law. I will, it's, I have never had the suggestion, I've heard people complain about it, I've never asked, I've never heard the proposed solution that you've mentioned. I am willing to take it to our fiscal people and see if it's a possibility. I will tell you this though, in terms of when people actually ask for a reduction, because I just got this question the other day. I was told that, that values are not being reduced and sometimes even being increased.
The market stays.
I know it does, but, I mean, I guess the good news is that the market is not in the free fall that it was, but look, you're right. Market is not, look, it's not a great market, but one of the things that I asked the Board of Revision for statistics, when I talked before about how we try to measure what everybody does, I had heard this complaint. They're not lowering values. 71% of those that have been, where there was a challenge to the Board of Revision, 71% have gone down, have been adjusted. You had about 26% that stayed the same and it was a very, it was 1 or 2% that had actually increased. Look, your point is well taken.
Well, I mean, just a question please.
Yeah.
That's on established homes, of people who are agreeing for revision because they feel they're bad as well.
I understand your point, but we do buy them.
I'm talking about new sales.
No, I understand what you're saying, but one of the things that they look at with the new sale is whether or not the property was sold under distress or, because if it's sold under, under state, my understanding is, under state law, if you get something at a fire sale, in other words, you don't necessarily get the benefit of the distressed sale. So, that's always an issue with this.
Are you talking about our month's yields or are you trying to...
I'm talking about the fact that they're supposed to look at, they're supposed to look at the conditions under which, I'm not talking about a sweetheart deal between, between two people. I'm talking about a, what I've heard described as a distressed sale, where a sale, let's say, let's say a house is legitimately worth $100,000, but it's in foreclosure and the people just have to dump it and somebody snaps it up for 10 grand. I mean, that's happened in the City of Cleveland, but that doesn't mean that the fair value is 10 grand. But look, I understand what your point is, but...
Because why would a person pay higher taxes? Why would they buy a house, say, at $150,000 and be paying taxes on it a double that of what it should?
I understand what you're saying.
This is, I'm not quite done. That would help a person to decide, what you just told me, would tell me, "Don't buy that house because you're not going to get the benefit of what you actually paid for." I mean, why would you pay money on that?
Look, I see your point, but what I would say to you is, is first of all, that right now, the buyers must assume that they're gonna continue to pay that tax rate.
What? It's legal.
Ma'am, ma'am, it's not illegal. I'm just telling you that under the current...
Okay, would you say...
No, wait, 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 ma'am, because we're not, we're not gonna have a debate about it.
No, I'm...
Ma'am, 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 wait. I heard you, I heard you out.
Sure.
I heard your suggestion. I'll take it to fiscal office. I'll see if it's even legally possible. You make a good point. What I'm telling you is that right now, there are a set of rules that you don't, hear me out, that you don't agree with. I understand why, but when you, but, but the buyer must assume that they will pay the taxes as they are currently assessed. Now, you may not like how quickly they can be changed, but, but when you say it's a surprise to them, it isn't a surprise. It may not be fair, but it isn't a surprise. The assumption has to be that if you buy it, you're going to pay the taxes on it that it's currently assessed. But I will look at what the suggestion is.
No, no.
I'm not gonna keep going backwards. We're gonna go to the next person.
I just wanna clear one more point.
Sure.
The former administration that was so corrupt and so hard to deal with, the former administration coming, so corrupt and so hard to deal with. I, as a griller, would advise my people, my clients, to call down there, that so, or take down there, a copy of their deed or a copy of their offer for the signed contract. And that could be reduced every day. So, I cannot find any place where there's certainly certain rules and I can't find those.
I'll look at it.
Please do because I'm...
I'll do it. I will, I will look at it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your commitment to early childhood. But I have concern about what I see happening with families when they are attempting to access the childcare scholarship, the vouchers. I'm worried that it's taking so long for families, for the time they apply to when they are notified of their vouchers, that they are losing jobs, there's a childcare spot. If they are 18 or 19 years old and they're in a high school and we're trying to get them back into school, they're falling through the cracks. I don't know who to call, what to do. And it is true, they, we go into an abyss. There's lots of voicemails, so there's, but the voicemails are full and the workers...
Is this something that you think has gotten worse recently?
Yes.
Starting when?
Well, I would say the last two weeks of my life have been absolutely affected by it. And I know that as of July 1st, the policies changed and the income guidelines changed, but it's worse and it's directly, it's hurting everything we're trying to do. We're trying to keep people working and it's trying, and it's starting to go backwards.
Well, let me, let me tell you two things that, that I think might explain it, what I would suggest that we, that we try to do about it. One is that the county does not contract for things the way the county used to. So, the county spends hundreds and hundreds, actually, most of the county, most of the $1.2 billion is not in personnel or not in our direct deployments. It's in contracts that we give out to an agency or to a provider of one kind or another. Okay? So, for instance, we spend roughly $50 million a year just for foster care. And so, these are big numbers that we're spending. The way the process is working, it's different in two ways. One is that the commissioners used to approve all of the contracts. There was one meeting, you went from the direct, directly from a director to the commissioners. The commissioners would take a vote on the contract and that would be the end of it. There is more scrutiny of contracts now than there used to be. And that has slowed things down to some extent, especially in this first year of operation of the government. Because we, what we have, which is similar to what we had in Lakewood, is we have a Board of Control, which they didn't use to have, which I sit on, we have council members that sit on it, treasurer sits on it, Public Works Director sits on it, because we wanna make sure that if, if an expenditure is approved, that it's gone through a lot of due diligence before we approve the money. And there's more scrutiny of contracts than there used to be. We also questioned a lot of contracts that had been granted year in and year out. What that means is, for instance, there were social service contracts, and I don't think they included the ones you're talking about, but there were social service contracts that had been given to various social service providers without any kind of competitive process or, or putting them out for bid. And every time we do a service, if we can, we try to bid it out because we want there to be an open process for whoever wants a contract for the service. And that sometimes means you have a longer process, but you have a better process at the end of the whole thing. Now, all that being said, it doesn't mean that sometimes bureaucratic problems don't happen and that we can't do a better job with it. Rick Warner, who is here, is the head of our Human Services Department. We have consolidated, have consolidated our Human Services functions under Rick's leadership. We have had complaints like this and we have been able to resolve them. So, if you have specifics, if you can talk to Rick about it, we will, Rick and I will talk tomorrow morning and we'll, we'll see if we can get on top of it and see what's at the bottom of this. Because I understand the urgency of it. Okay? I'll do my best.
I'll be brief, this is more of a briefing, but you may want to comment. As a pastor of the City Parish and head of a Catholic school, our reality has also changed. And our school had a 70% more families on poverty level. When we asked adults, adult education, what are you interested in? Computer skills, personally, as they mentioned. Second, was English as a second language? How can I get my high school TPC? This is major change for us, Catholic, Catholic school and Catholic children.
Sure.
In the parish, many of the things that the city is doing, even the state and county, are supplemented a lot by the church. We have 100 centers here. We feel, we see maybe 600 families a month, sometimes 700 during holidays. That's supplemented by our community garden, maybe several hundred pounds of food. The church is contributing, doesn't show up on any statistics anyway. In Barfield School, the kids that would ever have a community garden, they barged some data, not 100%. Our parish is helping people pay their life bills, $2,000 maximum for like 15 people. So, two things. We're very concerned about the water buildings that are starting in October. I believe that's impacting this neighborhood greatly. The other thing about economic growth and job expansion, besides the things I mentioned, the biggest request I get for is bus transportation. People can't get to a job, if there is a job. So, if there's any way that transportation can be assisted, to help people get a discount or whatever.
Yeah.
First-hand hiring and also get a discount to get first-hand job. Then I'd like to be able to... If I sit down, I don't really like to comment.
Sure. No, that's fine. I appreciate the, the observations. A couple of things that I'd mention, and first of all, your point, your point is well taken that there are a lot of services that are provided by religious institutions, charitable institutions, that we probably don't fully appreciate and are difficult to measure because there are a lot of people that I meant, like I mentioned at the beginning, that have kind of fallen through the formal social service networks and providers and places like Blessed Trinity end up catching them before they, they fall too far. And we know that they're there. Now, in terms of with, with the hunger issues, the county does directly provide about a million dollars in assistance a year. Now, some counties have cut back on food, food bank assistance. We have not. So, we have maintained the same funding level even though we have left, less revenue. So, we understand that that's important. We're also a major funder, actually, of Catholic social services and different programs that they run. So, there are some partnerships that are out there with the faith community. And we're continuing to have dialogue, by the way, with other parts of the faith community if there are other ways that we can, we can work with them. I just met with a collection of African-American ministers about... I just met with a, a collection of African American ministers about forming a, a partnership with them about reentry issues with individuals that are being released from correctional institutions who are not trained to go back to work. And if you don't train them to go back to work, what are you gonna expect? You don't be surprised if, if they end up reoffending. And so there's a lot of reasons to be supportive of that. So we're, we're still, we're still looking at that. I was struck, you mentioned two other things. One was, was, maybe a couple more than that, but two other things I wanted to just comment on quickly. One is the, the whole situation with job training. We are gonna be putting, with this hundred million dollar fund, we are gonna be, be putting more money than we ever have before in job training, but we're doing it a little bit different. Because under some of the old programs, people would be trained for jobs. So somebody would come in, they'd be unemployed, they'd be unskilled, they'd go through a program, they would learn a skill, and at the end of the process, you had a more skilled unemployed person. Sometimes they were being trained for what they wanted to do, but that wasn't what-
Was available.
Was available. And we started, the guy that I hired, actually, as the head of our economic development department helped, he was working for the city of Cleveland at the time with the workforce investment board, and he helped develop kind of a new model, which sounds really basic, but it has worked and it's drawn national attention, because the placement rates have gone through the roof. It's a very simple concept. You go to the business first and you say, what do you need? And if you tell us what you need, we will pay for the training of your worker. And it's a godsend to businesses, they say, wow, I needed twenty people that could do X, Y, Z, and I was gonna have to pay to have them trained, and now the county's gonna pay for it. And now we know that we're not just training somebody who's still gonna end up unemployed, we're actually gonna place, train them and place them at the same time. And the success rate has been amazing. And now the National Department of Labor is looking at doing the same thing. So we're looking to, to expand that. And we do need, by the way, we are trying to, to interact more with some of these community organizations, because when we get these programs up and running, we wanna make sure that we're doing them consistent with you. Public transportation, I, I try not to overpromise. There are certain things that I just can't do. Public transportation is funded under a separate system. I've been very disappointed with some of the cuts that R T A has made. They cut a, a service in my city of Lakewood when I, when I was the mayor there, which was the community circulator, which I thought was about the best program that they had in the last twenty-five years. You know, they made money off of it and they still cut it. It's crazy. They also made money off the one in West Park and they cut it. Dumb. So, and I told them I was, I thought it was a dumb idea and it was, it was a mistake, but they wanted to cut the entire system. They wanted to cut the entire program, because some of the cir, community circulators were not being used. So for instance, Lakewood and West Park and Euclid and Tremont, those were the big four that were being used. We had five hundred thousand rides in city of Lakewood. Only costs, dollar a ride only costs three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to run, they were making money on it. But they were also running a community circulator in Westlake. Well, they weren't using it there. I mean, not a lot of people going to Cracker Park by the community circulator. It's just not, it's just not done. So, you know, I, and I talked to the mayor, mayor of Westlake, and he said, I'm not really concerned if they cut it. My constituents don't use it. And I said, well, do you care if they, if they keep it for us and they just cut it for you? He said, I don't care. But, but R T A wanted to, to be fair by eliminating it for everyone. Thanks, so thanks a lot for the fairness, but, but, so I thought that was a mistake. So I haven't agreed, and I've told Mr. Calabrese this too, so I'm not talking behind his back. I've told him I thought that was a mistake. And I think they should revisit some of those choices. Unfortunately, the state government that's been cutting us has also have, hasn't been very supportive of them. Federal government has been a little bit better, but the federal government, through the stimulus program, funded a lot of transportation projects, but not operations, only mostly capital projects. So if you wanted to build a new rail line, you might get federal money for it, although Ohio, Governor Kasich ended up saying, never mind, we don't want it. But if you just said, we're having difficulty making ends meet, or we're cutting back on routes that people rely on to get to work, to get food, to get their medicine, there was no federal, there really wasn't federal money for that. The only silver lining I can tell you, because county government is not gonna be able to just adopt that. They, we can't, we don't have the money for it, we don't have the revenue stream for it. They are primarily funded by sales tax. And the good news is that we've had the first six, back-to-back, six-month increase in the sales tax for the last six month, months than we've had in about three years. So hopefully that will help thing, alleviates things to some extent. Yes, sir?
And first of all, speaking as Lakewood resident-
I've seen you a long time.
I know, I'm sorry.
You live on the Hellraiser, if I recall.
That's right, that's right.
Yes, sir.
We love Lakewood and speaking for all my friends, thank you again for bringing Lakewood back from the brink.
All your friends, did they tell you that that was okay for you?
All my friends, and my friends, and other guys, I convinced them of it. You, you really did a wonderful job and we're excited to have you as the county executive, because we already feel the big turnaround for the county, which will help Lakewood and help all of us. This morning, I picked up a complaint, Taylor, and I read that it seems, and, and correct me if I'm right or wrong about this, it seems like the governor wants to create a, a Rita system for the entire state administered out of Columbus.
Right.
Is that news to you? Have you had a chance to process that? And if you've had, what are your feelings about that?
Yeah, it was news to me, because I had not heard this as a complaint from the business community. It is allegedly being done on behalf of the business community. So I called a friend of mine, who's a businessperson, who has a, a pretty successful business that operates in seven different municipalities with seven different tax systems in Ohio. He also happens to be the mayor of Lakewood now, Mike Summers. And I said, Mike, is this a prob, I'd never heard this before, is this a problem? He said, no, it's not a problem. He said, I don't understand where this is, I don't understand where this is, this is, is coming from. So I don't quite get it. To me, government should provide combined services or shared services when there is a desire of those communities to do so. So I'll give you an example. We have a Cuyahoga County Board of Health. They provide health services for almost, for, they don't provide them for the city of Cleveland, but for all the suburbs, they provide them. That's because those cities want to contract with them. But if the city wants to have their own health department, they can have their own health department. So if a, if a city wants the state to take over their municipal collections, then I don't have a problem with it. And if the state wants to come up with a formula to say, we'll collect your taxes for you and we think we can be cheaper, great, cities wanna sign up for it, that's great. But if a city doesn't want to, or a city thinks they can do a better job. See, the thing, the whole thing is about consolidating services is there's a balance between being bigger and being more efficient, and being smaller and being more focused on your customers. I mean, bigger isn't always more efficient. I always told people, well, if bigger is more efficient, then that, doesn't that mean that, that county government must be more efficient than local government? Well, we know that wasn't true. Doesn't it mean that state government must be even more efficient? Doesn't it mean that the federal government must be the most efficient? Or maybe the U N is the most efficient of all? Well, no, it doesn't necessarily mean that. Sometimes if a service is provided on a larger scale, you can save money. But sometimes you lose accountability. And, and the individual cities are the ones that know whether or not that makes sense for them. So I don't know if the proposal's going anywhere, but it was news, it was news to me. Thank you, sir, good to see you again. It's been two, three years. Yes, sir?
What are your bullet points on your negatives towards the county government scandal and corruption?
Yes.
Do you feel that's totally cleaned up, or is it an ongoing investigation?
Uh, well, I think that it's certainly done for elected officials, uh, current elected officials. I think that, you know, I, I know a little bit about the way the federal investigation process works, because I used to work for the Department of Justice as a, as an F B I agent for three years in Chicago, working on political corruption investigations, which were so similar to this that you wouldn't believe it. And they are a long process. Federal prosecutors are not in a hurry. We have our own, our own lives and our own timelines, and, and I, I have, I have been praying that it will just get over with so that we don't have to dwell on it. But they have their own timeline that only they are privy to. Now, the trials are scheduled, I think Mr. Demora's trial is scheduled in January, if I don't, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't think his indictment is, is, is probably the last indictment. It may be the last indictment of a public official, but I'm not, I'm not sure. A previous public official, I'm not sure. I think it's at least winding down. But there were a lot of contractors that I think were caught up in all this. And I don't know that we've heard the last of a, of a contractor that paid for it. I don't know that we've heard the last of a county employee that paid for a job. I don't know that we've heard the last of that. Here's what I think people need to know, though. They need to know whether or not, no system is, is perfect. No system is scandal-free. There's never been a government that's scandal-free since, since the beginning of, of time. We have over five thousand employees, if you include all of the county agencies that are, that aren't even directly supervised by, like the courts and developmental disabilities and so forth. It's, it's eight thousand employees. There's gonna be employee misconduct. I guarantee you, there will be, I've seen it. I've terminated a score of people this year for misconduct. So that's gonna happen. The question is, is the system itself rigged? Is it corrupt itself? Are big government decisions and contracts being given out because public officials are in a conspiracy with contractors? And that, I think, we have put behind us. But we may be dealing with the hangover of it with these other charges until the, until the, until the federal officials feel like they're, they're finished with the investigation.
Well, I'd like to see you after me.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to see you after me.
Sure, if you got a tip for me, I'll be all, all ears. You know, you know, and I, I'm being a little hard about it, but we, one of the things, one of the reasons I know that we're doing something right when it comes to integrity issues is that we are regularly getting information about, from the public and from employees, about things that they see that they don't think are right. We turn them over to the inspector general and we let the chips fall where they may. I don't tell the inspector general what to investigate, what not to investigate, she has the authority to do that. So I'd be happy to talk to you, but if you have information, I may end up just telling you, look, I'm not the person that's gonna investigate it, I'm gonna give it to the inspector general. Yes, yes, sir?
I'd like to revisit the tax question.
Sure.
My mother-in-law was in a nursing facility, assisted living, and she received an application for absentee ballot. It was prepared, sent back, she got the ballot, it was filled out, gets sent back. They said that someone had to sit with her and assist her in doing this. I can guarantee you, she didn't know at the end of the process, for what or for whom she voted. And mailing out, applying to mailing out applications for absentee ballots presents a fraud opportunity, for which I don't have a solution, I just wanna give you the problem.
Um, I, I, I'm not saying that that can't happen. I mean, if somebody was filling it out for her without her knowledge and having her sign it, then that person would be guilty of fraud. What I can tell you is, almost every national study that has been done, and this is according to Democrats and Republicans, this includes Republicans that were on the county board of elections, that they believe that there was less opportunity for fraud under a vote-by-mail system than there actually is in an in-person situation. And let me tell you what their reasoning was. Their reasoning was that if somebody was voting under an alias, let's say, once they cast the ballot, the ballot is there, it's gone, it's cast. If they fill out an application that is fraudulent, let's say, there's still a chance for them to catch it by any investigations or audits that they may do. The other point that I'd just like to make, I, I, I don't think that any voting system is completely invulnerable to fraud. I don't think that exists in the world. Here's what the real question is. Not everybody wants to admit this, but here's, here's what the real question is. The question is, is there, is there coordinated, concerted, sys, systemic and systematic fraud? Are elections being changed? And I try to be a student of history, this is just my opinion. My opinion is, if you look through American history at when there was really effective voting fraud that changed outcomes, it was in the counting of the votes, not the casting of the votes. And that's, that's not because people are angels and they wouldn't cheat if they couldn't. It's because the amount of effort and manpower that it would take to try to get thousands of people to cast fraudulent votes is not really practical. So almost every single instance of, of voter fraud, whether it's in person or by mail, has been a drop in the bucket and really hasn't been affecting state or national election. But your point is well taken. No system is totally invulnerable to fraud.
Can you, why don't you let somebody know that you're forty?
All right, well, no, we're not gonna do, it's not gonna be like Jerry Springer. We're not gonna, we're not gonna talk question about back forth. I mean, you can talk to them afterwards, but we're not, we're just not gonna do it like that. We're gonna take one, we're gonna take one more question, it's eight, it's eight-thirty. And I know people have to get going, I wanna be respectful of your time. All right, we'll take two. Uh, we'll take two, that's it. My daughters go to bed about nine o'clock, I wanna, I wanna see them, I'm sure you have people that you wanna see. And I'll just make a quick closing comment after the two questions. Yes, yes?
I wanna tie a couple of things together that you mentioned.
Okay.
I didn't know what you were gonna mention, but I was in a meeting earlier with Dave Ryan, who was talking about the workforce development.
Yes, sir.
And talked specifically about, a little bit about the budget. And that his budget, with that budget, of course, he's been doing it for two months, so the budget from eighteen billion to nine billion.
Right.
And if we talk about what's going on in Washington now, there is a threat, at least some threat, that is, some people want a zero out of zero.
Good, sure.
Right. So, so it's challenged. Now, I think that's important, and one piece of that is that all the money for job training that is going into the real board has been federal money. So we're potentially looking at, the only money that's in the pot is, is the money that you were talking about on the economic development fund, that's one piece. But it's an important program, and I guess that's the important thing. The second thing that I wanted to comment on is that the whole issue of reentry and having people come back into the community and, and getting them job ready, job training, is a, you know, it's a bigger issue for this county than most places, certainly in the state and a lot of places in the nation. So that's a huge issue. Mr. Ryan suggested that we have a real gap right now in terms of the skills that these people come to the workforce with and the skills that are needed for the job. And that points to the other comment that you made, that as we move forward, we're realizing sixty-five percent of the jobs that are gonna be developed need the skills that now we don't have. So the challenge around job training, I guess someone will lift that up, is really big. And I think we really need to cover the grip with how we're gonna deal with that.
Well, you're, you are one hundred percent right. The gentleman that he's talking about is a guy named Dave Ryan, who was recently appointed the head of something called the Workforce Investment Board. It is a joint effort between the city and the county. They used to have separate workforce training programs, they combined them into this Workforce Investment Board. The person who's my head of economic development is a guy named Larry Bender. He's the old head of the Workforce Investment Board, because I wanted somebody running economic development for Cuyahoga County that understood how central this whole issue is of, of worker retraining. What the gentleman was referring to is, most of those programs have been funded for years and years and years. And by the way, with Republicans and Democratic support out of Washington at one time, and a lot of those, those programs have been funded from, from the federal government. Those funds have been cut back dramatically. They may disappear entirely. Now, I don't know what we'll do if they disappear entirely. I don't necessarily wanna say right now that we would be able to make all of it up, but I will say that a portion of this hundred million dollars, I do believe is gonna be dedicated to, to worker retraining. Your issue about reentry, I just wanna say one more thing about it. Because you get, you get, you get people that get that issue and you get people that are actually offended by the issue. And, and they may not speak up, but I guarantee you they're there. Because they, they will say, look, why are we gonna do anything for somebody that committed a crime and went to prison? Why are we gonna spend money to try to make sure that they get a job? What's the point? I'm speaking to you as somebody that was in law enforcement for eight years and as a prosecutor for five years. I put a lot of people in prison. The worst experience a prosecutor has is putting somebody in prison and then four years later, you see the same person, they've done two or three years, and they're right back out and they're doing it over and over again. So whether you're compassionate to those people or not, they are not disposable. So whether you're compassionate to those people or not, they are not disposable. They're here. There are thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of them. And if they don't have an economic, a viable economic alternative, they will make an alternative, which will not be legal. So it's, 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 we have got to have a strategy when it comes to them. Yes, yes, ma'am. I, I will, I will talk to you afterwards, but I promise that I was, I want to be a man of my word. Yes, yes.
Yes, exactly, what I wanted to talk about was the reentry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm all ears. No, no, go ahead.
The current problem is that the recidivism rate is so high because they can't get jobs. So in this county, what I've heard is that something that might be a misdemeanor in another county becomes a felony here. And I get calls, because I'm a, I'm connected through my job with this group, um, I get by accident calls from background checkers who don't know how to be rashi, who don't know the difference between a felony and misdemeanor, who don't know that just because it's in felony court and has been reduced to a misdemeanor, they totally miss that. I get people who call that have been fired from their jobs. People are going, these, uh, background checkers are going back 30 years, um, they're, they're, you know, how can they get jobs and keep jobs? And now with the economy the way it is, it's even worse. I got a call from Moore Office, your inspector general, I got an email about if you got a second job or something that might be considered a problem if you're a county worker, which I am. And I wrote back to her and explained everything that I was doing. I've been trying to, um, get a nonprofit off the ground for a long time now, and I have gone up against every possible problem with it, and it is geared specifically towards H.D.O. foster kids who hit the streets and then become our felons and the felons. And so I'm going to offer to volunteer for that hundred million dollar fund you have to start programming for this group who desperately needs this, for retraining, because I have an excellent idea, I just think it's out there because I'm nobody.
Okay.
So, um, it's yours, Ed. And, um, uh, but, you know, this, this issue needs to be addressed either, you know, county level or state or somebody, one of you guys here, needs to pick this up and run with it. They have, they have people who, you know, you can't push your sister, and if you push her twice, you have a felony assault conviction, and you can't get it expunged. The expungement process, you get it on your record expunged, and yet your fingerprints are on file with the FBI and the city and the county and everybody who touched you. And, um, so instead of doing background searches, they're doing fingerprint searches. And this is what's creating problems for people who had a brush with the law, not even a conviction. So, you know what I mean?
I, I do, okay.
So I'm just like lagering on, but-
No, no, that's okay, that's okay. But here's what my response would be, there's a couple things that, that I would say, I want to deal with your, your specific personnel decision about being a county employee and having a second job. The only thing I'm going to say just as a-
No, 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 I told her, I, I did it about the nonprofit that I tried to do.
I, I know, I just want to tell people, we do have a policy where if you are a county employee, you must disclose if you have other employment. The reason we have that is because we had people that were working two full-time jobs at the same time, and one of them was a county job. So what we set, "Look, if a county employee wants to work a night shift doing something else, or if they, you know, that's fine," but there has to be disclosure, we have to know what it is. And so the inspector general does check up on those things. Um, your point about people getting felony convictions that sometimes they don't deserve, in general, you're, you are correct, that does, that does happen. And it, there have been state changes with some laws, but sometimes individual cities have discretion about how they charge a case. So for instance, I'll give you an example. For instance, there were suburbs that would, would handle a case as a misdemeanor drug violation that the city of Cleveland was handling as a felony drug violation. Now, there are reasons for that. I mean, one of the reasons that the city of Cleveland was, was handling it that way was because there were elected officials in the city of Cleveland that wanted to handle it as a felony, because they wanted to send a strong message, "Don't deal drugs or do drugs in the city of Cleveland." So these things, there are reasons behind why they happen. Some of them have now been fixed, but some of them have not been fixed. One of the things that the county funds, believe it or not, is we give money to legal aid to allow their attorneys funding to do expungements for people. Now, I know expungements are not the complete solution, but the only part that I don't totally agree with you about is, expungements are a partial solution to some background checks. Most background checks are not fingerprint checks, I'm just telling you. The counties isn't, and I'm just telling you, there are, but there are, I'm sure there are some companies that do it, so it's hit or miss. But look, your overall point is, is correct, especially if a child gets a felony conviction at age 18 or 19, uh, and, and it's, it's, it's locking them out of jobs. Now, there are also some things that the state can do, because there are state regulations on what jobs you can have when you have a felony conviction. Now, there are certain jobs that I believe, once you've been convicted of a felony in that area, you should not be allowed to be hired in it. So if you've been writing, if you get a felony conviction for writing bad checks, I don't think you should be allowed to be hired, uh, in a government agency, in the treasurer's office or something like that. But if somebody, let's say, oh, look, here, I'll give you an example of something that I thought was really, was really unfair, that the county was trying to do. We were interviewing somebody to be a property appraiser, and in 1988 or something, she had a, a DUI, and the plane dealer put it on the front page of the paper, that we were considering hiring somebody that had a DUI conviction. Now, how many people are we going to exclude from public employment? Now, I don't excuse DUIs, I, you know, I, that's, that's, she should pay her penalty for that, but is she supposed to pay a penalty 22 years later? So, um, believe me, you're not going to find too many more, too many people that are more tough about law enforcement than I am, and that's why I went into it in the first place, but you can't prosecute yourself out of, out of this problem, because these people don't disappear, they're part of our local economy. But I appreciate what you said and the points that you raised, and I will, I will, I will consider it. I'm going to talk to you afterwards if I could. Is that okay? Is it a quick question?
No.
No.[1677.78][1677.78](laughter) Do you want to have dinner?
I did write everything down.
Oh, you wrote everything down?
I wrote everything down.
Okay. I'll talk to, I'll talk, I'll talk to you, if you can talk to me over here in a second, if that's okay? All right? Um, oh, hi Danny, I didn't, I didn't see you there, Mr. Kelly. I want to thank you for spending a, a big chunk of your, your evening, we didn't come in, we went a lot over an hour, but I thought the questions were good. I want to thank Father again for allowing us the use of this hall. We do these, we do these every month. We do them in, and we, we alternate in, in council districts. And if you want to go to our next one, where is our next one?
Garfield Heights.
Garfield Heights. So if you want to go visit us in the, in the wonderful city of Garfield Heights, you're, you're more than welcome to. You don't have to be a resident of the community to go to the, to go to the, to the meeting. The council people are also doing occasionally their own public meetings, and I would encourage you to, to, to look at any meetings that they might have. But this whole process, just a, one final thought to leave you with, when we had that, that list of the assets, you know, the, the downside and the, and the upside, what we want to do is we want to take county government, which was on the, was one of the deficits, and we wanted, we hope that in a year or two, if not already, that you, you would list that on the list of assets, of what we have going for us, that we're, we're part of what's going to make this whole thing work. And it isn't going to work if it's all top-down, me telling you what to do, it's only going to work if we get people engaged and involved in offering their ideas like you have been nice enough to do, uh, this evening. So I appreciate your attendance here and your, your participation and your, your patience, as I might have talked a little too long, but I enjoyed it, I hope you got something out of it. Thank you, thank you very much.[1790.86][1790.86](applause)